Welcome everyone to the, it is now 7:01. Welcome to the April meeting of the Town Council of Washington, Virginia. I am so, so deeply sorry that we have had to hold a meeting in person. And hopefully, we won't have to do it after tonight. Let's go ahead and the call of order, let's have a roll call to ensure that we have a quorum. Patrick?
Here.
Brad is here.
Here.
Joe is here. Fred Catlin is here.
I'll swing.
All right, we have a quorum for the meeting. We have agenda. Gail, do you have anything that you want to add or delete from the agenda?
Yeah, so the new business, delete the additional budget work session. I'll cut something under my report here.
All right, any other additions or deletions? All right, we have a roll call vote to approve those. In favor, please say aye. Brad?
Aye.
Patrick?
You're doing minutes?
No, I'm sorry, we're at the agenda.
Yeah, I.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Agenda is approved. Any additions or corrections?
Under Mayor's report, the plans go, under the second paragraph, plans go to the ARB, not the planning commission.
All right, I hear no other additions or corrections. And I have motion to approve the minutes with one, that one correction.
I will make motion to approve the March 10 minutes with the sort of the correction in paragraph 2 under reports on page 1.
All right, second?
I'll say.
All right. Roll call vote to approve. Brad?
Yes.
Patrick?
I was seen because I was not here.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. It's approved. Mayor's report, I have, I have three things to bring up. First, I want to thank Fawn Evanson and Linda Webster, the friends of Rappahannock, and all the many, many other people. Rita Garcia and I can't remember the name of the nursery, Brian.
Let me just do a plan of his last name.
All of those people for the wonderful job they have done in investing in the future of the town of Washington by, by doing the planning of the trees. That happened on the 6th, 7th, and 8th, and they did a wonderful job. So, we are indeed grateful to them for doing that. And Fawn and Linda, thank you especially for getting that going. Second, the, I feel like Groundhog Day in that I have, it seems the same report, month in and month out about the post office. The most recent variation of it is that the Army Corps of Engineers had a recommendation of how to address the issue of the wetlands. We have gotten approvals from various, from the Postal Service to go ahead and go with those recommendations. They have to go back to the Army Corps of Engineers for their final sign off, which they are required to do, I understand, by May 1st, at which point we are ready to go. There is the Post Office Task Force, which has met twice to work with the developer on some changes to the post office to make it more aesthetically in style with the rest of the town of Washington. To it, a change in the pitch of the roof to, the preference is to have an 8 to 12 ratio on the pitch, which mimics most of the buildings that we saw around here. Second is to have a standing seam metal roof instead of an asphalt roof. And to have a better guttering system in place. All of these things would likely have to be paid for by private funds because they would go beyond the original budget for this post office. But if all those things can be done, we should be able to start construction sometime in the month of May. And there will be such a mighty war on that day when that happens.
Over in champagne.
Yes. Finally, finally, this should be our last in-person meeting. I apologize again that we had to hold this meeting, but there were a number of things that needed to be done here that were not considered necessary for the ongoing maintenance of the town, and so they had to be addressed today. My thinking is likely we will be going to electronic meeting from here on out, and I will try to move expeditiously but not haphazardly through our schedule because I don't know about you guys, but this mask is extraordinary. I'm confident. Treasurer's report.
Thank you. We'll deal with that one. Everybody wanted to have another budget work session. However, we got so much done at the last one that Fred and I spoke, hopefully you will all agree that if, Brad, I want to give you access to Google Docs, the spreadsheet, and if you do a detail line by line of waterworks and wastewater, and then you and I can chit-chat if we need to. And then, once that's done, Joe and Barbara and I can get together and do any tweaking that needs to be done and figure out how much money. The last part that has to be done is always figuring out how much money has to be moved, for instance, from the LGIP to the different accounts. So, that would be the last piece of the puzzle. Then we can email it out and it's, we'll be ready for more than in time to do a lot of the volunteering.
Okay.
So, I'll take care of that. You've got the treasurer's report, the February one that I go deep with, I have a nerve to go to the hospital. And March, I have to apologize, is missing the bank statement and dating balances because I just planned right out of time. So, I will fill those in tomorrow and send it around to each of you. LGIP is about the same as it was in the month before, except for a little interest that would have been added. Bills to be paid and have been paid, nothing really outstanding to point out. Then to the draft, town of Washington, is that on the, where did we put that? Is that on the main?
Yes. It's in the packet, but it's, it's part of your call.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't put it on your separate call. There's nothing new here, but it's never really been in writing what, how we handle money. And I thought it would be important that we have something so that not just you, the Town Council, and the grocery journey, know what the town clerk and treasurer do on a day, a monthly basis. So, it just tells you who does what. I'm the only one, plus son in the hospital and part of the country, and then it's Fred, who can move money. Barbara can write the checks and spend it, but only you can move it.
Okay.
The one thing we did do just recently, we always had a debit card, but it was on just the general account. As more and more of our vendors want credit cards, the last few months, we were having to charge everything on that one debit card, and then I'd have to go in, balance it all, and move everything over, swishing money back and forth. So, anyway, I called Atlantic Union, we now have a debit card for each of the three accounts. So, it's going to be so much cleaner and much easier to balance the account. There was one error there because I drafted this before we had all the cards. It should be say, under number five, it should say town hand debit card. Get rid of that.
All right, so do you want to make a motion that we adopt these financial procedures?
I would like to make a motion that these financial procedures get adopted.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right. Joe seconded. Any further discussion? Let's have a roll call vote to indicate aye to approve, nay not to approve. Brad?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Aye for me?
Aye.
All right, it is approved. Now, we need to have a roll call vote to approve the billing fee. And I need to have a motion to do that.
I make a motion to approve the bills to be paid.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Patrick. Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
Brad? Phil?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right.
I'm turning, no, that's okay. No, I didn't put it down here somewhere. I want to turn this section over to Joe for a couple of minutes, please.
So, it's actually one of our rare time on the phone the last week talking about our various outstanding financial obligations. And I talked about the federal loans first, so we don't at the moment have a lot of flexibility on the federal loan side unless something changes with the next round of Corona relief or CARE relief. We do have the option, if we wanted to, to take them into a deferral status for six months. There's a mountain of paperwork that goes along with that that we would need to do. The upshot of that, if we deferred them, is that it would also allow us to renegotiate the interest rates for those loans as part of that package. We're paying 6.375% on one loan, 6% on another, and 4.5% on another. The prevailing rate with USDA right now is 1.375%.
And these amount to somewhere around $500,000?
$234,773. We're paying.
Those are all on water system?
Those are all on water system. It's one loan for 132, 471, 76, 137, 146, 166.
Okay.
So, we have some options there. Those loans do mature in the not-too-distant future, 2033 and 2035. So, we have some options to start there, and they're willing to help us if we want to go down that road with those loans. Again, our carry costs on those loans are relatively low, but maybe worth them. More importantly, I talked to VRA, and they are willing. They need to check with their lawyers to make sure we can do this, and they encurs legal work on our side. They are willing to skip our one payment due in May and re-amortize that over the life loan. So, we wouldn't pay, we'd only pay $88,000 total this year rather than our usual 170-some thousand dollars.
Good work!
Yes.
I think that will give us a.
On the water system, there's no interest, so it's just.
No, the payment just, yeah, we just agree, the payments, the remainder of the loan will go up slightly, but we would be able to skip the May payment. We may be asked to take action on that at the end to ratify that decision that we want to go forward. It would certainly give us some breathing room to get through to the end of the year.
Joe, when I talk about, we get, hopefully, a situation, a little more, maybe in August or something, relocate the loans on the water system? And then, at that kind of look at, do we want to deal with them, or do we just want to take out a loan, just take them all off? We've got options, so we've got to be capable of that until the latter end of the summer.
With your ultimatum current, so we can continue the conversation, VRA will hold off on that one for the time being. All right, we started that process too.
Yeah, and I talked to Patrick Moni, you've gone to Joe, and you're already on.
Yeah, they're one of our representatives, one of the work of this.
Great. Okay. Great, thank you very much. Anything else here?
That's it.
All right, anything from the planning commission? Phil? Anything from the planning commission?
We've got a long meeting.
Okay, so you have a held, held a meet, do you know if you're holding a meeting in April?
I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Unless we can, because we can't handle it, what a comment.
Architectural Review Board, Drew, welcome to the Architectural Review Board. Anything to say to the Architectural Review Board?
There was not a meeting this month.
Thank you. You did that very well.
I, I am thinking with the way things are working in the post office, that there will likely be a meeting in May. And it may have to be, because of the way the Attorney General has cited the rules, it may have to be an in-person meeting. So, we will, we will come to that when we need to. I'll talk to the chair about that.
Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Mayor, if I may go back to the question of these loans?
Yep.
Just to interject a consideration. If we were to incur new obligations with the bank-qualified loan, the tax-exempt rate, and to do that, we have to retain bond counsel. And the last time we did that, we negotiated a very exceptional rate, it was $5,000 for what we did. But you could probably more typically count on $10,000 bucks to have bond counsel handle new issues. So, I just mentioned that so it can be factored into your calculations when you're.
Consider rolling over that three. If we consider rolling over the three, one of us.
Then, second thing, I was asked to look into the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly, then the Human Rights Act.
Yep.
And as a handout, I think everybody's got, there's a summary. It's quite detailed, quite broad. I have a link to the statutes themselves, and it will really spin you around and try to read the whole thing and grasp exactly what's going on. But I think the summary says it pretty well. Now, there is a sort of a companion to this act, Sunville 868, which by the way, wasn't signed by the government until just recently. I saw it actually posted on the mid Saturday. He waited, he had a deadline of April 12, and it was infected to the end. So, but the companion to it is 15.2965, Human Rights Ordinance was in commission. Just read it somewhere real quick. A locality may enact an ordinance not inconsistent with more stringent than any applicable state law prohibiting discrimination, having applied public foundation credit, et cetera. The things that are mentioned in here. B, the locality may enact an ordinance establishing a local commission on human rights that should have the powers and duties granted by the Virginia Human Rights Act. And if you read through that whole thing, it's very similar to the EEOC procedure, that if you have a complaint, you have to exhaust your administrative remedies, and you have to go through this commission, and if it finds that there's, it's well taken, but they make a referral, but they don't represent the person, they don't help them in court or anything like that. It's time-consuming process. So, that's, that's what the General has told me to do.
Is there, is it worthwhile for us to align some of the language? Some of the language may not be aligned with our statements on the website and in our declarations of the town. Should we? It seems to me that what you're saying is that there are two components. One is I'm seeing the language that they're using, and the second is this, this Human Rights Commission. We have enough problems getting warm bodies to fill all the things that we have already. I just, I think that is going to be challenging for us to get people to volunteer to be on the Human Rights Commission, and I think that may be beyond our administrative capacity as well. But I would like to make sure that we have the alignment in the language. Is that, do you know what our language is now by any chance?
No, but one, one thing that council may consider is adopting a resolution that all town practices either have to flush out the language, shall be in strict accordance with provisions of the Human Rights Act.
All right, well, I would like to make a motion that we consider that resolution will not be able to do it until the next in-person meeting of the Town Council. But I would like to make sure that we do a resolution that, that aligns the language of this recently passed bill, SB 868, aligned with the nondiscrimination statements of the town of Washington. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brad. Roll call vote to approve. Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil? Brad, yes. And Gail, yes. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bennett is in your hands.
All right.
And let me repeat again that because of the nature of the chronic meetings, this unfortunately cannot come up in front of the Town Council until we have our next in-person meeting. All right, anything else, Mr. Bennett?
I have more about the emergence, but that's a separate agenda.
Okay. All right. The next item, I sent you a whole lot of information on, I guess the financial procedures we've already done. And the next thing is the town contribution to the local nonprofit. What the Town Council asks me to do is to figure out a protocol that we might use for, I think this is the time for it.
No, that's not the business. This is just the existing.
Okay, just for the $2,000 that's budgeted? All right. Do we have a proposal?
I do, as a matter of fact. I would like to record, to make a motion that we give $500 immediately to the Rappahannock Food Pantry. And that we will, towards the end of June perhaps, review where we are from a town standpoint budget-wise, if there is, or any other recommendations.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry? So, 500 to the food pantry immediately?
Yes.
And?
I make a motion that we give $500 to the Rappahannock Food Pantry and leave the remaining 1,500 until further review of our financial staff.
Is there a second to that motion? Or is there any other motions on the floor for the expenditure of funds? I'll go ahead and give a second to that motion just so that we have a dialogue.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, given the current situation.
All right. There being no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to have $500 of the budget of 2,000 be designated effective immediately to go to the Rappahannock Food Pantry. And then, Town Council will determine, based upon, I presume, how the year ends, the other 1,500. All right. Those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye on a roll call. Brad?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. And who's past? Write the checks. All right. Going through the nondiscrimination ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We just did that.
Yep, all right. Now, the next thing is, the other thing that the Town Council passed me to do is to write up a protocol for a topic that we discussed at length at the last meeting, which is, there are people, both residents of the town and of the county, who are patrons of the community and, much like this recent pre-planning, are willing to contribute funds to see the town become an even better place than it already is. And so, the whole purpose of doing this was to try to identify some kind of instrument or some kind of vehicle by which a donor could make a gift and receive some sense of confidentiality in making a gift. And having been in the business of being a professional fundraiser for half my life, I know that, that donors, especially donors of larger gifts, loathe to have both the name and the amount of their gift showing up in public documents. However, as a town, we are to be sensitive to the need to be transparent. And so, the idea with this document is to create purposes that are identified by the Town Council. The Town Council needs to approve the creation of a fund for that purpose. The fund will be managed by the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and people would give to the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. Their names would be on public record because the, the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation does list its donors. And the town would, the Town Council would determine how the funds would be spent in accordance with the original intent when the Town Council set up that specific subcode within the overall fund. The Northern Piedmont Community Foundation uses a investment, three different investment advisors. In the month of February, I think they had a 24% return on investment. The March, they end up losing 18 and 1/2%, but I think everybody did in March. But nevertheless, they have a pretty good record. And there are two fees that the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation would charge. The first is an administrative fee of 150 or 1% of fair market value. The second is an investment fee of .85%. And these would be done to, written up to come out of the gifts themselves.
Those are very good percentages. That would rank high in charity marketing.
Got it. So, it's a good organization. And the point I want to emphasize is the Town Council would identify the need for the town. The Town Council would vote to establish the designated purpose subcode within the town of Washington's fund through the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. And only the Town Council by vote can release funds from the, from the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. And they would be released, and I propose a mechanism that funds that are released by the Town Council can be spent in the direction of the majority of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the treasurer, just so that we have, in other words, two of the three would have to agree on the use of funds for whatever purpose. And probably, we should have, as we do for the treasurer's report, we should have a report of expended funds. That would be in the meeting.
Absolutely.
So, that is the proposed process. We have right now an urgent need to have a vehicle for. We have right now an urgent need to have a vehicle for the post office. People who may be interested in contributing to the post office enhancement fund to embellish, to make it more aesthetically pleasing. And this would be the vehicle by which we could receive the donations to do this work. So the... Beyond the proposal of this protocol, I would also recommend three action steps. One, to establish what I think they end up calling an organization fund with the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. The second is create a designated subcode within that fund, use in making enhancements to the new Washington-Virginia post office to be built on Lady Plaine. And third, to authorize the use of funds in this subcode to pay the difference in roof pitch, possible alternate roof material, landscaping, and/or other enhancements that are specifically on or about the post office property on Lady Plaine. That's a mouthful. So I guess, before I even make a motion, I want to make sure that we're on the right path. So I open up to town council for their feedback.
I think it's a great, it's a great way to enable to enhance the town. That people that really care and love about the town just need a vehicle like this.
Anything else?
Certainly, from a dollar-to-sense perspective, it opens the door to access to funds that couldn't otherwise access. What's not constrained environment?
Oh, I was gonna say, from a budgetary perspective, it gives us access to additional funds, which we would not have otherwise, available in this budget.
More than what's constrained environment, will find ourselves. I do wonder if we can carry on a debate very long this evening, but if there weren't a couple of other subcodes, you just go ahead and vote in at the same time and suggest what means to the building that we are setting in and want for general verification of town.
Great thinking.
Town and restoration of visible restoration and maintenance of town hall. Maintenance of town hall. And actually, I may have found a source for that. All right. Then I will go ahead and make this a motion. Basically taking everything in points one through four, as well as action steps one through three, letting number three action step to add to this and to establish three subcodes. One for the pay for the difference for the post office enhancements, the second, the identification of the town, and the third, restoration and maintenance of town hall. And I guess the fourth would be to empower the mayor or the vice mayor to go ahead and begin the discussions with the town attorney to establish the fund, organization fund with the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. That is my motion. Is there a second? I'll say it. Joe? Joe got in there just a half a second too. Any other discussion? Let's have a roll call vote to approve the motion. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Brad?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. This will make a wonderful difference for the town. The next thing we have is authorize a public hearing for the 2020-21 budget. Chris Smith, do you want to do that? Or you want me to do that?
Well, we have to figure out... What's that little conversation for us? We have to figure out, when in hell am I going to do this? He has to be in person, right?
How to hold a public hearing?
To hold a public hearing, does it have to be in person? Or because it is an emergency that we have to do?
But we don't know if the emergency is going to last through June 30th.
If it goes past... We could do it here at the June meeting. We could make it at the June meeting pending... John, this is a what-if question. What if we can't hold the June meeting face-to-face because of the emergency situation? And we have to get a budget approved? We have to hold a public hearing? Can we do that electronically?
I don't think anyone knows. It's... That's one of the things the statute's silent on. It's been a case law. It's interpretive, that part of it. The statute is pretty clear that you have to make facilities available to allow the public to speak, which to me implies that you could hold a public hearing electronically. I'm over the view that these statutes have to be read pretty broadly in the situation that we're in.
I think though... I thank you for that, council. I think, Eo, it's your suggestion of going for the June meeting to do it. The June meeting is actually June 9th, if I recall. The governor's order ends on June 10th, but I think by that time, we're going to have a much better idea of what's going on. Know whether we're on the down slope or whether we're still in the mid-steadiness. So I would follow up and propose that we authorize a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020-21 budget for the June 9th. I presume it's June 9th, and Barbara can check that to confirm. June 9th meeting of town council.
Let me mention one thing from there. Budget process is unique. You can't, to be voted at the meeting that you hold a public hearing. It has to be another meeting. So typically, it's three meetings. You authorize, you advertise, then meet, you hold a public hearing, and then the meeting take the vote.
Well, then I...
Unless you have a special meeting.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, unless you're going to have a special meeting in June.
We could do two meetings in June.
Now, you know, the way I drafted this motion, this resolution for electronic meetings, you know, you don't have to figure it out now. You can figure it out as you get closer to the meeting, whether you want to go electronic or you don't.
I was going to say, we can really table this until May.
Exactly.
And then make a particle and...
Well, we cannot, Jim, we cannot... If we have an electronic meeting, we cannot discuss this in May because it's not deemed credible to the ongoing... It is if it goes... If the emergency goes beyond June 30th, but if the emergency ends before that, then this is not germane to electronic meeting in May.
So if we do a public hearing in June, on June 8th, we can then call a special town council meeting for June 9th or 10th?
Do you have to have a certain amount of time for...
Typically, you have at least three days' notice.
Yeah, but so...
Having thought about this whole situation more, you know, at first, I was over the view that it had to relate to expenditures that were made period-to-period of the emergency. But now, my view is that you're charged by law to adopt a budget. By a gym theory, you're charged by law to go through this certain process that requires essentially three meetings that are typically about three regular meetings. And that the consideration of the budget at one of these electronic meetings is necessary for you to comply with the requirements of law. So the more I think about it, I think we just have to give this the statute about electronic meetings a broad ablation.
So we'll do the public hearing one way or another at the June 8th meeting. And then we will have an additional town council meeting on the...
Maybe the 15th.
Right.
Let's do that.
And then you have to authorize this meeting, I guess. You advertise the...
So we're going to advertise for the June 8th meeting to be a public hearing, at which time a decision will occur at the June 15th meeting. Correct, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
Do I have anything?
Just, I think I made the motion. So the motion is that we have... Do you want to make the motion?
Yes, sir.
God knows, I don't want to take the thunder from... No, man, no, I'm very sensitive. So, motion is to authorize a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020-21 budget for the Town of Washington. The public hearing to occur on Monday, June 8th. And then the town will vote on the budget at a special meeting on Monday, June 15th. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Brad?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? All right. All five said yes, you have. Thank you. All right. The other thing that the town council tasked me to do was to come up, based upon having been involved in fundraising for a great deal of my life, is to come up with some protocols for us to use for future gifts or the dispersal of funds by the town if the town budgeted its money. And I can't find the thing in front of me.
Based on the money's availability?
Yeah. And so basically, what I've suggested is that there be an application process. I think I have the application process, since I can't find the thing in front of me. Application process... Oh, here it is. Nope, that's not it.
Here you can look at it?
Yeah. Application process should be submitted to town clerk by February 1. The application should consist of a one-page letter briefly explaining use of the funds and how the funds will be used, and how much the funds... How much funds the organization is seeking. And include proof of status of 501(c)(3), that means it's a nonprofit. And to also submit the most recent balance sheet and profit and law statement, as a way to ensure that we're talking about an organization that is a valid organization, that the money will be free. And then, rewards would be voted on. The town clerk would assemble all the applications, and the town council would review and vote on them at the April meeting of the town council. And a check would be presented at the May meeting of the town council. And then the organization would agree to give a report to the town council at its October meeting. And the funds, I tried to make it as pre-open as possible, either for general operational expenses or as a collateral for building campaign. That is what I proposed. Any questions or comments or thoughts?
Should it be some caveat in there? Based on funds available, something like that?
No, this is really just a protocol if the funds are available.
Oh, okay.
So this is not, this is not meant to determine if the town is going to be able to... It's just if we do have funds, this is how it would be dispensed.
I think that's good. Well structured.
Any other comments? If not, then can I have... I'll make a motion to enact this. Can... Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Eo? Then any other discussion? Then a roll call to approve this motion. Brad?
Yes.
That is?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes?
Yes.
Then that protocol is approved. Into effect. All right. Mr. Bennett?
I have drafts with two items for council to consider. And I just put something on paper for everybody to take a look at, start talking about it, but certainly nothing...
Maybe I have copies of it.
Magical about the order of persons who it serves or the emergency manager. And there's nothing magical about the numbers in there other than the... We'll stick up first the the emergency ordinance providing for electronic meetings of the town council, town planning commission, and town architectural review board. So at this point, town has no policy. There's a state statute that governs when you can have these meetings and some procedures that you have to follow. But it doesn't really touch upon how to call one in the first place. And just so everybody is aware of the process of how to invest and how an ordinance should be adopted, an emergency ordinance for that to be advertised and that would be effective for 60 days. And this is, I think it would be a good idea to advertise and adopt it as a permit ordinance in case this comes back, or anything comes back, and you'll have it in place. So what I've got on paper now is that the mayor, or the mayor's absence or inability to act, the vice mayor, and in the absence of or inability to act of the vice mayor, any four council persons can essentially call an electronic meeting if you give notice that's reasonable under the circumstances. There are provisions in the code that indicate you could call a meeting one night and meet the next morning if there were a disaster. When we talk about this in legislative history, disaster is, they were contemplating war or a natural disaster. But we'll find out with other types of ten specific twists just as well. So then, planning commission, essentially the same thing, vary the numbers because there may be fewer people available to vote on this or act on it for the ARB and the planning commission. But that would be it. And it just deals with the trigger for calling a meeting. It's clear, ordinance is very clear that all the other requirements related to electronic meetings and how to record it and logistics and everything else have to be followed to the T.
All right. Mr. Bennett, I'm starting to get really uncomfortable in my mask. So I will say, thank you so much for your ordinance. Do you want us to vote on this now? I presume that we are...
I think so.
Can I have a motion to...
I said it.
Thank you, Joe. Second?
Second.
Eo, thank you for the second. Any other discussion on the emergency ordinance? If not, a roll call vote to approve or...
But this is the one question, you know, this vote...
Now, this is not the resolution. This is just the emergency ordinance.
Okay, that just applies for this current situation.
Yeah, that's what you get this document.
Right. Okay.
And then what happens is what I'm hearing Mr. Bennett saying is that if we, that it's worthwhile for us to consider at some point after we come out of the, this current emergency situation, or if it goes beyond 60 days, that we look at a way to do this as a permit.
Okay, yeah, because this is specifically based on COVID-19.
Right.
But we should have one that's a more generalized or...
But in order to get that...
What grade of emergency? But this would apply to any emergency needs.
Okay. Unless for 60 days, is I think I read.
This ordinance would be effective for 60 days. Unless it can be renewed through that 60-day period.
Oh, you can with it?
It can be redrafted, yes.
Okay, okay. But that would have to be an in-person meeting?
Yes. Well, it could be an electronic, if I recall.
Because it pertains to the emergency?
As long as it was still in effect.
Right, because it pertains to the emergency. Right, because it pertains to the emergency. Thank you, Alan. So glad about it. Getting in force in government, that's the way government works. Uh, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call, either approve this, approve. Brad?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, the ordinance is approved. Thank you.
Here, my next slide.
Yes. The next, uh, thing is the resolution. As I understand, Mr. Bennett, you may or may not know this, um, that if you're a community under a certain size, I think it's 5,000, that you can defer to the county's director of emergency management?
No, I didn't know that. But I read through it, it said political subdivision, and the county is a political subdivision. You could defer, but you could have your own also. And I thought this would just give you more flexibility because essentially, in a disaster situation, it gives the authority for the mayor, vice mayor, or any member of council to not have to observe public procurement laws, anything like that, to do what is necessary to address immediately some disaster.
Okay.
And if we allow the county, I don't know, I just think that somebody at the council would be more responsive to the town than just the, as a practical matter.
That's a good point. Although a little bit, I do feel like Peter Sellers in the town, the mouse of war. But I think that sounds fine. Thank you for that. That's helpful. Then, questions from town council members about this? Yeah. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I need a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Brad moved, Gail seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call to approve or disapprove. Brad?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Joe? Yes?
Yes.
All right. So, approve. All right. We still have a vacancy on the town council, um, and, uh, we would welcome any application. The application should be in the form of a letter of interest and submitted to the town clerk at the town's address, which is post office box 7, Washington, Virginia,
They can submit it electronically by email to the clerk.
Thank you, Joe. All right. I hereby open up the meeting to the public forum. Mr. Public?
Don't you?
Anything to add?
No, I have a little announcement, though. I'm going to, uh, take a swing at hosting first, unofficially, uh, first, uh, virtual happy hour for the town of Washington, uh, this Friday. So, I want to err on the side of caution and make it invite-only, um, so that we don't get any Zoom bombers or any, you know, great, you know. So, I'd love to maybe work with you, Barbara, I've, I've got most, I mean, it's a small town, I've got most of the people's email addresses anyway, but, um, if there's a few more that I'm missing the blanks, if, if you want to collaborate on that this week, that'd be great. I was thinking, uh, Friday, at, uh, this coming Friday, at like, maybe 6 o'clock, to give people a chance to get home from work to pass cocktail hour, but I, I think, I think the first time will, you know, be a little.
I think it sounds wonderful. That's a great idea. And for people coming home from work that may be going from the din to the living room. All right. Thank you. That was all worthwhile for the public forum. I am hereby closing the public forum. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I don't think we need a roll call. Do we need to have a roll call prepared or can be voiced?
By actuality.
By actuality. You're done. Thank you all very much. You got that with power. Great job.